Testing, testing.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Chambers at Ten West State Street. Tonight is regularly scheduled meeting. It's 5:30 PM August 11, 2025. I flipped it. There we go. I don't need to start over, do I? Nah. Okay. Well, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. No action may be taken on items raised in the public comments to comply with the Open Meetings Laws. And now is when I usually turn over and ask anybody up here if they have any comments, but instead I'm going to say the microphone is open. And I do have something planned with a proclamation recipient recently as part of my comments. So, mic is open if anybody wants to speak before we get going.
Just a brief, Tim Vabray, 12 North 10th Avenue. Three times now nearly hit these people that's going on these scooters, whether they're two-wheel scooters or one-wheel or whatever. And even going down Center Street now today that I just about got nailed in the right in the center. And I just wonder, is it illegal that we need to make a notice about it or a fine? Or can they do what they're doing? Or what can they get away with on writing those things?
I guess I would like to comment on that in two fashions. One is I think the ordinance that we're dealing with tonight does deal with that. In terms of publishing it, boy, I tell you, if we published every ordinance, we'd run out of ink. On the other hand, it is a problem. And I've seen it downtown, too. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, as a lawyer trying to retire from doing insurance defense work, I gotta tell you, they've been good for business. Bicycles on sidewalks, these e-bikes, the skates, truly have been. So, yeah. Good comments.
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. What I have is an opinion, and it does deal with the agenda. And I don't think it's like number 13 and 14 in approval in the consent agenda where you're spending $10,000 more of my money needs to be there where you can't tell me why.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody else up here would like to speak?
Your Honor, if I may? I'm just repeating something I was asked to say. Austin Gill is from the Animal Rescue League. He's the director there. He is going to hold a class on animal welfare and animal behavior. It's free. It's at 1:00 PM at the House of Compassion on Friday, the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other consular who'd like to speak? Madam City Administrator? Okay. Well, would Tom Kurth meet me at the microphone?
I want to do, thank you. Go ahead. Want me to speak?
Go ahead.
I want to thank you for this proclamation. And this was done by a classmate of mine that I hadn't known in high school. And he understood that I rode on RagBri. And this was my 38th, going on my 39th RagBri. And every day, every mile, every hill. And I think he wrote this up, or you did?
He wrote it, I edited it.
I didn't know how he found you, whatever. But I wanted to get a picture with you and with this. And this frame was built by Randy and his daughter. And give it to me today. And I picked this up today, so.
Wow. Very nice. I'll need to recruit somebody. Would you?
Do you want me to read this, or you read this? Or you? Bill Hamaloo from Carolina, not Carolina, but shoot, I'm going to blank here.
I thought it was a Carolina.
Yeah, Charlotte, Charlotte, North Carolina.
There you go. Okay.
Ready?
Can you take one on the microphone? Yeah.
Because this has gone to Tom's head.
And I think, I will read it because I think it's really interesting. All right.
You want one with your phone, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you open up for me?
Yeah. My wife locked it out.
Whereas Tom Kurth, a lifetime upstanding citizen of Marshawn, just participated in his 39th consecutive bike ride across Iowa known as RagBri. And whereas Tom is the first and only 80-year-old person from Marshalltown to participate in 39 of those rides in its 52 legendary history. Whereas the 2025 RagBri was a seven-day event covering 406 miles across Iowa and parts of Minnesota. As a 39-year RagBri veteran, Tom has ridden approximately 17,828 miles, equivalent to six trips across the United States. And whereas Tom is humble and a kind, devoted husband and wonderful father and grandfather, and his physical accomplishments of endurance are extraordinary and serve as a role model for all citizens of Marshawn and Iowa. And then I didn't put this in here, so I'm ad-libbing. Tom has also been a great volunteer for the city of Marshalltown. And you were here not long ago to be recognized for some of that, too. Anyway, I therefore resolved, as the mayor of Marshalltown, to proclaim July 31, 2025 as the Marshalltown's Tom Kurth Day. He's also the guy that calls me every year when it's RagBri time, not RagBri, I'm sorry, Oktoberfest time, to see if I'll be one of the monitors at an intersection to try to help the people that are running instead of biking not get hurt.
My wife helped with that also. We finally got more volunteers than they did runners. They got short on runners and they kind of quit doing it. They're doing a little bit, so.
One year when I was a volunteer, I didn't, I made a mistake of not clipping my helmet back on. And I had a T-shirt in one hand and I had, I think they were giving away bananas or something like that in the other hand. Turned a corner coming to the intersection I was going to, and the T-shirt got caught in the front wheel of the bike. It stopped on a dime. I flipped over it. It flipped over me. I got a concussion. And the first thing I heard was some lady, well, I heard two things. The ambulance coming for me and some lady saying, oh, good, look, he's starting to move his fingers. And I had too much adrenaline to have much pain. But I was thinking, yeah, I'd kind of like to be able to use my fingers. So, I screwed up that year and there was nobody at that intersection.
Was that after you was a volunteer? I didn't hear anything about that. You told me, I think, one time.
I was talking to Mark Smith at the bank parking lot. And that's where, they ran out of coffee, so I had to take some. It was a donut that I had. And I had Achilles tendonitis, so I couldn't run that day. So, I was on the bike and I never made it to the intersection.
Oh, I see.
Blood pressure got up to 210, and then it dropped to 40. And it went back up to 210 and dropped to 40. And so, if I don't remember your name anymore, I blame it on the concussion. But congratulations again.
Well, thank you.
I'm just gonna get a picture on Tom's phone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. There were a lot of people on the bike trail today, this morning, though, by the way. Clyde Lawler is one of those. He's fast on there. Bob Peterson, I know you know, he's also a good bicyclist.
He wrote me a nice note, foundation.
Right. Yeah. Well, it was a fun thing to get to participate in.
Could I make a comment on that?
The microphone is still open.
Lonnie Hogland, 1408 East Main. I've known this gentleman quite a long time. I cannot sure, but I cannot believe he's 80. And he is deserving of that award unbelievably. And the city's going to be reaching out for a mayor. I think you might have found someone that could, there you go.
Yeah. Nobody would believe he's 80, truly.
I'll be 82 in two weeks.
Wow.
Or 81.
Yeah, don't get ahead of yourself. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all I had for comments up here. Let's go on to the consent agenda. I understand one of the items was removed.
Item 12.
12, okay. Does anybody wish to move?
I moved or approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
And that's minus item 12. All right. A roll call.
Ladiha?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Cal?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Let's go on to item number 12.
Resolution approving the fiscal year 24 annual comprehensive financial report for the city of Marshalltown.
Move for approval.
Second.
And discussion.
Your Honor, I ask that this be polled because I want the public to be aware of something in the report that may or may not come back and haunt us when we borrow money again. So, if I could ask our finance director to come to the microphone, please. And let me say for the record, it's nothing that we did, nothing the city did was wrong. And actually, if Diane would be willing to share with the public and the council what she shared with me about what happened, the process the city went through to try and correct this, it will first touch on what's in this report, you know, about the Friends of the Library. So, if you would, please.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Okay. So, in years past, we have gotten an unqualified clean opinion. This year, we are getting an adverse opinion, which means in its entirety, it can't be audited because the Friends of the Library did not get an audit that we could put as a component unit on our audit report. We started having meetings with them a year ago, and they didn't feel any benefit to paying for an audit. We, the city, said that we would pay for their audit. They didn't feel like they'd have the time to provide the information to us to put an audit together. And we suggested that they send the money to the city, at least get it below $1 million, so that we could put it on our books. And then they wouldn't have to show it as a component unit. The threshold that the auditor set was around $1 million. So, if they got it below $1 million, then we wouldn't have gotten this opinion. So, did you have any other questions?
Thank you, Diana. And I just want to say that personally, I don't think that Moody's is going to downrate us, you know, for interest rates in the future. This could be as little as a slap on the hand. But I just want to make sure the public understands if we don't get the interest rates for future bonding, that it more than likely is coming back to this, the unwillingness. And I did reach out to the president of Friends of the Library today, and he told me he had a prior commitment. And unless he sent somebody else, I don't know if we have anybody explaining their side. I just wanted this on the record and the public to know about it. And thanks, Your Honor. Thanks, Diana.
So, in our capital improvement plan, the Friends of the Library will be paying for the remodel of the library, so that will take a chunk of it down. But now we're looking at another fiscal year and probably one more to have this comment.
A question there.
Your Honor.
So, how much exactly do they have that they're not willing to audit?
As a nonprofit, they have a Form 990 that they have to file every year. So, they have $1.4 million. And $800,000 of that's going to go for the remodel and plus the new audiovisual equipment in the library. So, they'll cut that down once we get that project done and they send us the money. But they were unwilling to give us the money upfront.
Mr. Cal?
Thank you. The facts are the facts, and that's what was portrayed. The issue that we're coming up against is threshold of materiality, right?
Right.
Based in government accounting standards. Yes, that threshold had been met. But I did speak with the accountant, with the auditing firm. And as Diana said, a lot of this is tied to one-time financial position the Friends of the Library has with the expenses that they have upcoming. So, while it's not great, I don't think the full picture is depicted in them simply just not providing that information. It's rooted and tied to upgrades due to the library, one-time funding things. Thank you.
Again, they don't have any paid staff for the Friends of the Library. They're all volunteers.
And I know that social media was, somebody advised me that there was a Facebook page with a lot of comments about it today. And so, let me do what I can to clear up the record. Every once in a while, there's a big gift, and that can send the nonprofit or supporting organization over that $1 million limit, as I understand it. That may be what happened here, too. So, it's probably a rare event to happen. But I also would say we did, we being the administrator and I, meet with the top folks at the Friends of the Library and try and encourage that this audit happen and that it not be a problem in the future. So, I did just want to say that. It is an organization that is supporting of the library, but it's not controlled by the library staff or board, as I understand it.
Right.
The city doesn't have any control over who's appointed to it. And bless them for volunteering their time and raising the money to do library improvements. And we just have a great library here. So, we'll just hope that nothing happens in our bond writing.
I do want to mention that the $1 million was the threshold based on the city's overall assets. So, you know, if it was over in Ames, the budget is much bigger, so they may not have the Friends issue for their library. It's just based on our ratio.
So, Diana, they just said they didn't have time. Is that why they wouldn't go through an audit? I mean, $1.4 million is sitting there, and no constraint seems to hit the point. The promise is, but we had one nonprofit got defrauded. This seems concerned to me that they're not willing to get it reviewed.
Again, we don't have any control over it. They're an independent body. They would have to convert their data to an accrual basis because they're a cash basis. So, they would have to go back and accrue everything to get to June 30th. Their fiscal year end is December. So, there's a lot of extra work that would be involved. We didn't opt to pay for that, but they declined.
Your Honor, if I may? Diana, say again, but the bottom line is, and I understand what Counselor Cal is alluding to and the mayor is, bottom line is, all they had to do is transfer some of the money for the construction upfront to take the total under $1 million, and it would have been a non-issue. And now it could be an issue later on. But like I said, I don't think it will be. But I just want to make sure everyone's aware of it if it does raise its ugly head. Is that correct?
It will raise its head again because we're already in a new fiscal year.
I mean, is it correct that all they had to do is transfer some money out?
Yes. We requested that they do that, yeah. But it's their money, so.
The promise is they designated it for remodeling the library, right?
Yes.
So, it could be in an account that's designated with a very specific purpose that it doesn't get used for anything else but remodel out of it.
That's what we do with other donations as well. They're in separate accounts. We keep track of them.
Your Honor, Diana, isn't the issue we're running into is the city is the primary benefactor?
Yes.
So, I don't believe it's rooted in not trusting or having any oversight in their finances. It's the fact that the city is the direct benefactor, and it's not reported on our audit.
The purpose of the Friends of the Library is to help the city library.
Your Honor, if I may? I also believe that their treasurer or financial person also had some significant health issues at the time also, with she was unavailable to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comment up here? Any public comment on this one?
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. I have the same problem with this that I had with the other two. You're talking about my money in a financial report, and it's evidently important enough that we just spent 10 minutes talking about it. But yet, if somebody hadn't pulled it, we wouldn't have known anything about it.
Your Honor, if I may? The other two items, Jim, are printed along with agenda items. All they have to do is read it, and you understand where exactly that money was spent. So, it's not like we're hiding anything.
Your Honor, do you want to correct that comment about the Friends' money being his tax dollars?
I figured most of people would know that the dollars are all donated and none of it involves taxes. So, I didn't think the comment was necessary, but that's now part of the record. Any other public comments? All right. Let's go on to motions.
We need to call roll.
Oh, geez, sorry.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca? Yes. Cal?
Yes.
Ladiha?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
All right. That one carried, too. On to motions, finally.
Motion to approve a five-day Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for the midnight ballroom for the rodeo on August 30th at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Luisa has another band lined up and wanted to get one last rodeo in this summer. So, this will be kind of her same routine, a five-day license at the fairgrounds.
Last hurrah of the summer?
Yes.
I don't know. I understand that they're pretty well attended, so she might want to do another one after this.
You make it sound like there isn't going to be one in next year.
Yeah.
There's one already scheduled for April.
God bless Luisa for bringing these people into town like that. God bless Louisa for bringing these people into town like that, you know? Any comment up here or out there on that one? I don't think anybody's going to protest. Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Carry it. Three resolutions. Number one.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the 2020 derecho CDBGDR tree replanting project PRK 24002 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of $114,700 to Alpha Landscapes LLC.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Kelsey Stafford, Park and Recreation Director. In 2023, the city of Marshalltown received an Iowa Economic Development Authority grant in the amount of $200,000 for the re treeing of our urban canopy after the damage sustained from the 2020 derecho. The scope of work for this project includes the planting and watering of 200 trees with the work to begin this fall and be complete by May 31 of next year. Five responsible bids and one unresponsive bid were received by the August 5th due date. Staff recommend awarding the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Alpha Landscapes LLC of Johnston, in the amount of $114,700. Staff hope to work with the contractor and the IEDA to purchase additional trees with the remaining $80,567 in funding. Thank you.
Good project.
Comments up here?
Your Honor, do we know when we'll have any understanding of the remaining funds, if they can be applied to additional tree purchases or if that has to go back to the state?
I do not know yet. I've reached out to our representative with IEDA, but I have not received a response yet.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Sure.
Kelsey, for the tree planting, is it, have you guys already decided on where they will be placed and everything? Or kind of what's the plan on that since all of Marshalltown got hit with the derecho?
Yes, so the locations are predetermined. We, our staff worked quite a bit this spring to map out all of those locations and right of ways throughout the city and also in public park lands as well. With the additional trees, if we're able to purchase those, we'll have to go back out and map other locations.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may. This is kind of on the same topic, but we still have trees out there on the terraces that are marked to be come down from the derecho and the tornado. Do you know anything about when those are going to be coming down?
I do not have any information on that, but I'll work with Carol to look into that and get some information back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had our last one taken down earlier this summer, so I know they're still working on it.
Your Honor, if I may. I don't, I think what Mark's seeing, or excuse me, Councilman Mitchell's seeing is several trees were marked that were damaged because they qualified for the FEMA grant. I think all the trees on terraces are down and all the stumps have been removed because there were some that were left over in my neighborhood as far as stumps. I think what is still marked are they're just damaged trees, but they're not far enough to come down. Alicia, help me.
I believe that's correct.
I've forgotten what the colors were, but they were color-coded that way. And the one that we had come down, I think, was originally just damaged, but it looked so bad and didn't come back enough that they determined it had to come down.
Well, I'm sure our Park and Rec director will get back to us if we need to pay for some more coming down.
Yes, I will definitely let you know. Hopefully that's not the case.
Anybody else up here? Any public comment on this one? We need the trees. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have some comments?
Thank you for replanning the trees. We appreciate that, but I will, Councilman Thompson, we do, we found one. On the 30th, we had a, I'm sorry, Lee Botter 401 Orchard Drive. One of our rental properties, we did find one of the trees that had the markings that it should have came down, and it's not down. And during the derecho, we did have three trees, and I about cried. They literally, we had to take them down, two lightning strikes on two of the trees, and literally pulled up by the ruts on the other one. So we need to have the one on the terrace that'll come down because if it falls, it's going to take out the roof. So, thank you.
Your Honor, so Levin Webster?
Those trees are just making awful noise when they're pulled out of the ground, too, speaking from personal experience. Okay, let's go on to the next.
Call the roll.
Yeah, call the roll.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Remember to let people public comment, I just can't remember to vote. All right, next resolution when you can.
Resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing, Inc.
I so move.
Discussion on this one.
Your Honor, this is simply formalizing the show of support that counsel expressed at the last council meeting regarding the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. All right, discussion up here. Out there. Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Remember to let people public comment, I just can't remember to vote. All right, next resolution when you can.
Resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing, Inc.
I so move.
Discussion on this one.
Your Honor, this is simply formalizing the show of support that counsel expressed at the last council meeting regarding the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. All right, discussion up here. Out there. Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Remember to let people public comment, I just can't remember to vote. All right, next resolution when you can.
Resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing, Inc.
I so move.
Discussion on this one.
Your Honor, this is simply formalizing the show of support that counsel expressed at the last council meeting regarding the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. All right, discussion up here. Out there. Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Remember to let people public comment, I just can't remember to vote. All right, next resolution when you can.
Resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing, Inc.
I so move.
Discussion on this one.
Your Honor, this is simply formalizing the show of support that counsel expressed at the last council meeting regarding the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. All right, discussion up here. Out there. Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Remember to let people public comment, I just can't remember to vote. All right, next resolution when you can.
Resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing, Inc.
I so move.
Discussion on this one.
Your Honor, this is simply formalizing the show of support that counsel expressed at the last council meeting regarding the use of tax increment financing for the business expansion of TIG Distributing.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. All right, discussion up here. Out there. Roll call.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. And rather than have you read the whole thing again, which is kind of a repeat, let's.
Your Honor, I'd like a motion to waive the third reading.
Thank you. Roll call.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. Let's get them all back open. Ordinance is number one.
Ordinance 15109 to amend the official zoning map for Lot 12, Block 1, Woods Addition to Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, in the north 90 feet of Lot 1 and all of Lot 2, Block 2, Benford and Webster's Addition from Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa, from medium residential, density residential zoning district to general industrial zoning district, second reading.
I didn't catch all that. Would you repeat it? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Should be a public hearing.
Is this a public hearing too?
It did not, but it got published as a public hearing.
Okay, well, let's have a public hearing just to be safe. It is 6:02 PM and the public hearing is open. We've had the clerk read the title, and now I ask for staff review.
You saw this at your last meeting, so I'll spare you from a full detail.
Don't spare us from who your name is and your title.
Oh, sorry. Clayton Inter, Assistant Director of Housing Community Development.
I can't believe anybody would forget this stuff.
See, even staff can forget it. I'll spare you from a full detailed synopsis unless it's needed here or anyone, member of the public needs a synopsis. Staff is recommending waiver of third reading. This is a continuation of a project which you've seen on several occasions. No public comments have been received to date.
The clerk's supposed to say that one.
I've received no public comments today.
Okay, does the clerk get any public comments?
No, Your Honor.
All right, then it's time for public comment. Actually, I'll bet some people don't know which area we're talking about, though.
I have my pointer, Your Honor, if we have a map.
Good idea.
Do you want me to pull up the map?
No, just tell us. Generally, what area in town are we talking about?
This is adjacent to the Marshalltown Company, south of Main Street, west of South 8th Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment? Seeing nobody rising, I'll close the public hearing at 6:03 PM. We may be setting a record on these two public hearings. And call for a motion to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. And rather than have you read the whole thing again, which is kind of a repeat, let's.
Your Honor, I'd like a motion to waive the third reading.
Thank you. Roll call.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
That would keep it under where we would typically see a registered moped at any speeds higher than that, or a motor that's larger than that.
Any comments or questions up here? Otherwise, we'll open it up to the public.
I'd, sorry, I do have one more question. How about, how does this apply to like, private property? So, say, a hospital parking lot or a business parking lot? If they have a sign posted, no trespassing, no, I mean, it's a public parking lot, I don't know how you could do that. What, how, how do we cover that with our ordinances?
Well, that would be up to the private owner of that parking lot to notify us, and we would come down and do what they would wish. And if they chose not to have, or asked us to remove people that were utilizing that with skateboards, or we could go down and notify them. But they would be responsible for their own private property. And much like the school district, if they decided to do something different based on their sidewalk or paths, that would really be up to the school district to kind of define what they choose us to enforce.
You could put up more speed bumps.
More speed bumps, yeah.
So, would the, if it's say a school, would they have to post that that's, or how would we keep that consistent? Is that something they would have to post? Do they have to notify? How would they?
Well, generally, the, the school district could put it in their, their rules and regulations if they choose to, and if they want to discuss those options with us, that would be something that they could do, too. The one thing about the tennis courts is that would be included. So, that public tennis court that the high school has at MHS would prohibit bikes or skateboards from being on there. And we, if you choose, we'll take a look at broadening that definition for a second reading. I would honestly agree with that.
I'd encourage you, because pickleballs are prolific, and so they have basically the same basis in real life as a tennis court.
The other one is futsal, that got converted from tennis to futsal. By the way, I saw two people leaving the new pickleball courts at Riverside the weekend before last with tennis rackets, realizing, oh no, can't play out there anymore. I do, I think that's a good idea, though.
Yeah, I do, too.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Sure.
Chief, was, was there anything that happened that, you know, caused this to be changed in the ordinance for these, the skateboards and everything? Like, was there, why, why did this get brought up? Brought up, sorry.
One of the issues is the e-scooters. E-scooters weren't really classified as being skateboards or bicycles, and officers were having a difficult time distinguishing where the ordinance fell in the, in obeying regular traffic rules, stop signs, riding out in the street. And it was, it was impossible for us to enforce that without the clarity of defining one as a bicycle or one as a skateboard.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good, thanks.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Sure.
Tim Bradbury, 12 North 10th Avenue. Two questions, says this address having lights on them after dusk and dawn, and then the other thing is, what was I going to say?
Just wait till the 72. Those senior moments happen more often.
Oh, golly. Right on my tongue, I wanted to bring it up. I'll just say, and I'll think of it. Oh, is there a difference between you stopping minors or young adults or adults, period? Because I see all ages doing it, and I've yet to ever see anybody stopped or intercepted or whatever on this.
So the rules would apply to all ages for scooters and pikes, and the ordinance does include lights on the front and back of bicycles if they're ridden on the roadway after dark and then before dawn.
Other public comment? Let's call the roll.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Very good, that's our first reading, so we'll see what the second one looks like. Onto discussion items, you want to read that first one for us?
Additional discussion regarding vault removal and private utility relocation costs related to the Main Street and Center Street reconstruction project.
So this is a follow-up to a previous discussion that council had at its July 14th city council meeting. Council asked that staff go back and look at other properties that were similarly situated to CGA's property and kind of try to identify what their costs were in addressing their vault, their vault removal. As we kind of explained in the memo here, it's proven difficult to get that kind of documentation after the fact. We've outlined sort of the challenges from each property owner, and so we're looking for some direction from council on what, how you want us to proceed, given that, that particular situation. And so, once things staff might recommend, that we provide a maximum amount, like a flat amount that we would give to any property owner for relocating their utilities from the vault. That might be one option council could consider, there may be others as well. So we're just looking for some feedback.
I guess I'll go first, Your Honor. After the last meeting where we discussed this, I did quite a bit of thinking, and for us to turn around and, and okay Clap Saddle Garber's request for even half the funding, I kind of got cold feet on it. And it comes down to just a pretty simple thing, and that is, we're spending public tax dollars, and how does this help the public? And one business is gaining from us doing this, but others have already gone in and willingly done their job by doing what they needed to do. And then after the fact, we turn around and come back, go, oh, wait, we might have made a deal with Clap Saddle Garber, so you guys, do you have any receipts and stuff? And, you know, I did say to Mr. Hoagland that, yeah, we, you know, we have contingency funds, we do that. But in looking at it, this is a long project, and I, and by peeling away a lot of the contingency funds, we might find ourselves, could be short. Plus, it sets a bad example if our department heads or city administrator or anybody say, no, that's what the council decided, and this is the rules that we're going to follow, so take your choice. Now, Clap Saddle Garber could take a cheaper route on this, but they chose not to. But I've changed my mind on this. I would vote no on providing 50% of the cost. I, I think when you know three years ahead of time something is coming, you know, and there's no public purpose, there's no, there's nothing that the public can enjoy or see that helps. So that's just my opinion.
Your Honor? I think the, the public purpose or public good of this is removing the vaults in the future liability. I, I think that's clear to everyone, and that's the city's preference to not have to dig up sidewalks or streets in the future to address something specific to council direction. We did unanimously on June 12th of 2023, two years ago, agreed to remove the vaults and communicate to the property owners that it's their responsibility to move those utilities. I went back, watched the YouTube video of it, Bolton and Mink, Heather, were open and transparent about specific Clap Saddle Garber and maybe a couple other buildings. Nothing was said in terms of dollars or impact, other than it's likely going to be expensive. So from my perspective, finding out about the, the reality of what some of these expenses are two years after making the decision, I think that's exactly why we're here as a council, is to, to review and, and make sure that our intentions align with what the realities of the project are. Looking at the January 13th, all we spoke about was the fire suppression and wanting to incentivize. So this was a, a topic decided long ago without all the facts, so I appreciate the right to reserve, I appreciate business owners coming forward and, and saying, maybe this isn't right, or, or is there a better solution there? In terms of contingency funds, the only thing I can offer or think of is this an opportunity, whatever threshold, whatever dollar amount, percentage we agree upon, come from council-designated local option sales tax as to not impact this, this project moving forward. And we know we're going to encounter more on, on West Main when that opens up, so. In my book, I don't, I don't think this is a closed topic, I, I like the right to revisit this. And again, going back over two years, I, I wouldn't have had the information or the knowledge to ask the proper question, so that's a fault on me, but I, I think that's why we need to review it. So, thank you.
Other council comment?
Your Honor, question, so what thoughts were the city having on the percentage? Did they have something in mind?
I think we weren't thinking a percentage, we were thinking up to a maximum of something, where if they produce the receipts, that we would reimburse them for those costs. So I'll just throw out up to a maximum of $10,000. If they, if they provide receipts up to that amount, then we can reimburse them up to, up to $10,000. I don't know if that's the right number or not, but that's kind of, that's the methodology that we were thinking of.
Your Honor, if I may, some of the owners that have already done the work, they don't have all their receipts, is, does that create a problem?
Yeah, they, some of them don't have receipts, or they've had family or friends help them with some of this work, so, you know, it, it, it hasn't been documented maybe as well as they would have documented it if they knew that there was going to be a reimbursement upfront.
Your Honor, if I may, I feel like I'm in the same camp as, as Councilperson Kel. When we had that first meeting, money wasn't discussed, never was my intent to put any financial harm on the business owners. And again, hindsight's 2020, yeah, we, we made a mistake that night. Because the, the business owners didn't ask to have the street redone and the sidewalks tore up and the vaults removed, everything was fine. And again, I agree that I feel we should do something, and the costs are going to be different. I don't understand how business owners don't have receipts, being a former business owner, and even if, you know, then you start saying, well, they had friends do it. Well, now I'm hearing that we had unlicensed contractors, you know, doing contracting work of doing, you know, brickwork and, and, and pipe work and things like that, electrical work. So I, I got to believe that there's a happy median here, that we can somehow split the difference if we're not willing to do, pay for all of it. I don't, what's the, I guess for Carol, what's the maximum that we would reimburse on a code upgrade through an MB, or a CBD grant? I mean, why wouldn't this, why couldn't we make this, an accessory code improvement in bringing that stuff in, in from under the sidewalk and treat it that way?
You're testing my memory. I'm not, I know you remember.
Where'd be a percentage, it'd be a percentage match.
Danielle might know, do you know?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Danielle Leiken, Marshalltown Central Business District, do you need my address, too?
Yeah, or you could give the business address or...
Okay, 34 West Main Street. If you give me one second, I will get the information you're looking for.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about memory tonight, and I just wanted to go on the record this thing. I've got a memory like a steel trap. It's rusty and illegal in 13 states. Rusty and illegal in 13 states.
Your Honor?
Yes.
While she's looking that up, just make a point of clarification, I said Clap Saddle Garber and Associates, it's the center city building, which houses multiple buildings. I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
But we could certainly, while she's looking that up, use that as a guideline for the, for the maximum amount.
It won't let me open the file on my phone.
Yeah, we can, we can get back to council on that, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, so the maximum facade grant is 8,500, and then it's 12,500 if you're doing two stories. And so I know city code is less than that.
Okay. But if, if council gives direction to use that as a guide, we can certainly do that, and I can get back to council on the exact amount. Probably in that ballpark, I would imagine.
Or in between 8,500 and...
Yeah, kind of where my 10,000 number was, somewhere in that, in that area.
Isn't that some percentage match, not 100% match, or?
It, it would be, it would, it might cover 100% if your, if your costs were lower, it might not if they were higher.
I, I mean, I kind of like the direction we're going, but I think I'd prefer like a 50% split, so those who had more costs, I mean, everybody has a little skin in the game still.
Okay, we could do a 50% split up to a maximum of something. Does that work better? Okay.
Your Honor, I would agree with that, I like the 50%. And I, I would say don't cap it too low, because on West Main, we're probably going to hit something big, too.
Your Honor, the code grant reads that they're eligible to receive a matching grant of eligible construction costs up to 25% or up to $20,000, whichever is less.
So you think like 50% up to 20,000?
I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm not, I'm not so sure the 20,000, I'd like to see those numbers from everybody. I got to believe those other people can give you numbers. What was, what was the, the Clap Saddle Garber number? Refresh my memory.
I don't remember the exact number, 60 something? Am I right about that? 58? Instead of guessing, why don't you come up?
Thank you, Matt Garber with 3203, 130th Street, Marshalltown, even though we're in the county. 16 East Main is our building, as you're a city center. And I guess, Councilor Lottie Hoff, it, we, we have been negotiating or talking through for quite a bit of time, ever since we got word that the, the project was a definite go-ahead. We had to do quite a bit of design, looking at all the different options of leaving it out there in the vault, building the vault, which was more expensive, bringing it into the next middle room, which would have been a little bit of savings, but there would still be a vault underneath the sidewalk, and we'd still have to pay for the deck over the vault. So then we evaluated and just brought it in, you know, carved out some space out of our conference room in the lower level to make a mechanical room, so we had to move all sort of stuff around. So, you know, evaluating all those things, it probably would have been a little bit cheaper to keep it in the smaller vault, but not much cheaper. Bringing it in is about a 58,000, the estimated costs are about a $58,000 expense. And I guess, when we got into this, I had no, no idea it would be that level of a, of an expense with all the, the valving that comes in. We serve the three, two buildings to the west also through that, that same system. So it, it just dollared up more, and I really didn't get the final dollars until the spring, when shortly before I started talking with, with Carol about all the costs and the potential of, of just asking to see if, what other buildings were paying in the neighborhood as far as their total dollars, you know, are, is that normal for the rest of the community? The rest of the neighboring buildings, or are we the only ones at that level? So that's, that's kind of what triggered this discussion, just to make sure, you know, was that the expectation was to burden the property owners of, at that level of an expense? I mean, if it was five or, five, $6,000, we wouldn't be having this conversation, but at, you know, 50 to $60,000, that's a pretty good chunk of change that...
Yeah, it's a chunk of change.
Right.
And you've got a pretty big building, too, so everything's kind of a little expensive on there.
Yep, exactly.
I understand that.
So, I guess the, the, the original question on the, I mean, it was about $58,000 is the estimate for what we're at right now. Like I said, they're in the middle of working on it and trying to get it done ahead of the project right now, so.
So, Your Honor, if we would move forward with this 50-50 split or a cap of 20,000, then you would get, we'd pay for the whole thing?
No.
No.
No, serves three buildings. You get 20,000 per building.
Depends on how you word that, Councilor Thompson.
We need to look at that, I mean, because this isn't just servicing the one building where it's located, you're servicing the two buildings to the west for fire suppression.
Well, I think we were thinking more about per vault. Not per building.
Last, so to answer this question, so last meeting, last time we discussed this, we said 29,000 then? 50% of 58?
Correct.
Or whatever the final numbers. Yeah, right. And now we're backing that down, we're to 20,000. Is that what I'm hearing?
Floor is still open for discussion, but that seems to be the direction.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I like the percentage split. Again, it's that shared responsibility, that shared benefit, specific to other property owners that were unable to document their full expense, there is still some gains that they have from what they are able to document. So it's, it's not all benefit going to one or two businesses. Of the four, everyone will receive some form of benefit. And again, I, I think it, this is the discussion we should have had two years ago, and, and we didn't, so this is our opportunity to change course and make sure we don't get stuck in this position as we continue to move on to future phases of this.
What I do remember about the discussion is, and maybe it wasn't that one, it might have been later, was that we did want to have each building set up, or each lot set up, so that if somebody comes in and wants to do something new with a building, it would be easier and cheaper for them to hook up. So the idea was to make this an easier place to come and invest in.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
I feel like if we do anything, we need to align it with the facade grant and the, all the grants that Danielle was talking about. I don't think it should be more than the 10,000 or the 12,500 for one story, two story, and all of that. Like, I can't, it just, I feel like as a downtown business owner and a sole proprietor, we have our expenses and, I mean, and we do need to prepare for things, and, I mean, when things pop up, we have an opportunity to get quotes and see the best route. And I do appreciate that you're coming up here, and as someone who does know how to come to city council and explain your case, I'm not sure that every single business does know that and has the knowledge to even express their feelings just how, just as others have here. So I think that there have been a lot of unheard voices that would probably have made their case, just like any other business owner has, and have asked, and, and could have benefited from what we're talking about up here. So I think that if we're going to go to a route of reimbursing people, then we need to honestly go back and see what they all did, because like, if they would have done the, the, taken out the vault in a different way and made it a lot better for whatever they have in their basement, et cetera, then we should have, if they knew they were going to get reimbursed, then the story would have been different for each business owner. So I think that we're looking back to it, and it's like, it's already done, as a business owner is like, okay, well, I'm not going to rip this wall out and do, just because you're reimbursing me now. So it's just, it's just kind of a hit to the other businesses that did not benefit from this. That's all, Your Honor.
Other council comments or questions? Let's open it up to the public.
Your Honor, does anyone else, I, I know I've spoken a lot, comment? No.
No, go ahead.
I don't believe this to be a reality, but what we're also potentially looking at here is a property owner saying, I'm not going to sprinkle my, my business anymore, or my building. And that's exactly the wrong direction that we are, we are moving as a council that unanimously on January 13th talked about incentivizing all building owners, giving them the incentive in the future to sprinkle their buildings. Just a thought, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, public comment?
Dwayne Dixon, 200 South 11th Street. More of a question regarding if this would apply to just downtown or city as a whole, because there's a lot of commercial businesses and commercial property in town that doesn't fall within the downtown central business district. So if hypothetically... So if hypothetically, if I had a building and was outside the downtown area and had similar issues, could I apply for something or for the same grant or whatever?
A question. Do you know any commercial buildings outside of downtown that have a cold wall underneath it, underneath the sidewalk?
Not necessarily, but there's a lot of them that have utilities outside the building that are under the street.
It's my understanding this is for those vaults that were impacted by the Main Street construction.
May I? Mr. Dixon, I think that's something we could look at. It's not part of this project. But I think, you know, we don't want things to burn down in town. You know, and that was the whole intent behind this, if I remember right, is we didn't want a fire to start at one end of Main Street and take out all of Main Street. So, but that, you bring up a good point that we can look at that. Thanks, Your Honor. I think everybody up here who wanted to speak has spoken. Let's keep it to the public. Any other public comment?
Lonnie Hoagland, 1480 East Main. I think the staff, all the city people have tried their best to do this right and not pointing any fingers and say they made bad decisions. It's just a huge project and you're trying to get it done. And it's something that got forgot. And it's kind of like a change order thing. I don't know what the right term is and all this stuff, but your intent was, let's do it all right. And then you find out this is a terrible expensive one and you liken it to every person you hear. If your stuff is working perfect and in your house and the city decides to put a new street in or do whatever, and now you, hey, everything's working right at my house. That's what he's doing, but it's 60 grand. The numbers are huge, so it's just complicated. So I don't know how you can have mercy and how you can, the right way to do this, if there's a legal thing that says, if that building would get a lawyer and say, is it legally that the city has to help him out all the way? Or it's a legal question. So good luck.
Your Honor. I'm willing to move this forward with a percentage and a cap. I, I would prefer 10,000, but I'm willing to move this forward for the next meeting.
Public comment? Marco Yepes Gomez, 11 North Sixth Street. I just want to come up here and kind of echo a council member, Fonseca.
Excuse me, Marco.
Yeah.
Point of, was that a motion, Your Honor? Really hear it as a motion. Thank you. Sorry, Marco.
Yeah, very good. Uh, yes, I just want to echo what council member Fonseca said. Yeah, I, it's just, it's whatever we do, we got to make it fair for the businesses that, you know, went out of the way, way of, you know, saving, maybe, you know, struggling a little bit to, you know, make their whatever, $10,000 repair or whatever. But we got to make it fair for them. I know a lot of people don't show up to council meetings and, you know, they don't voice their opinion. So, and I'm sure a lot of them are those business owners that probably, you know, felt the hardship of the repairs or the, you know, the, whatever you call it, repair. So yeah, just make it fair to like those owners that did it the right way. So yeah, thank you.
I'd like my comment. Just so the public knows, I mean, the, the owners who have already done this type of work were listed in the memo packet. I don't know that there's any others that weren't listed because there's only so many vaults that the city knows about. If somebody do, does know of any outside of that, let us know. But the intent of this whole project was to try to get these things lined up ahead of time. So we knew where a lot of this stuff was. It's just offsetting some of the costs because of a project that the city wanted to do.
Anybody else would like to speak from the public? Otherwise, let's get back to the suggestion.
So I have up to 50%, or 50% up to, I have 10,000 here and some, some remarks on 20,000. And then we'll go back to the businesses, the property owners that have already done some of this work or are about to do the work and make sure that we get some form of proof of payment from them.
Your Honor, if I may? I'll make a formal motion that previously we, we promised Mr. Garber 29,000, you know, and I'm hearing 10,000 here and 20,000. I'll make a motion that is we do a 50-50 split for the past work and all future work, and we do a cap of $25,000. I think that's a happy median between the 20 and the 29. So 50-50 split for the vaults only, for the re, you know, what we're talking about, and then a cap of 25,000. Motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
Your Honor, can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
Funding source?
I would say the contingency within the plan. And once that's met, then we would have to reimburse the project. Because obviously these, some of these will come before the project's over. So I'm saying we, we put them in the contingency for the street, you know, and the improvements. And then if, if we get into a problem with the contingency being used up, then we'd have to reimburse out of lost for those vault reimbursements.
Your Honor, some clarification. Who promised the 29,000? You said we promised.
Well, okay, we discussed it in the last, the last meeting. It wasn't promised.
Okay.
But we talked about a 50-50 split, about a $58,000 cost. So that's the, the previous discussion. So promised was the wrong word. You're correct.
I'll second the motion.
Anybody up here need further discussion? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
No.
Kel?
Yes.
Lodihoff?
No.
I carried. Staff has its direction. All right. Number two item for discussion is Storm sewer dispute of 1,001 May Street. Who has to lead off this discussion?
So this was an item that was requested to be put on the agenda by council member Thompson. So if you want to start and we can fill in.
I guess my first question, was the property owner notified? We were just talking about this tonight. And was she given a chance to be here?
No, I did not notify her.
Then I would move, we tabled this till the next meeting, Your Honor.
Second that.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lodihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
It is tabled. And then the last item is the four-year 2027 budget, contracted services and local option sales tax, also known as lost.
Okay, this is the first of several discussions that the council will have about the upcoming fiscal year 27 budget. The first discussion we wanted to have was about the contracted services. And so I have highlighted the top of the highest value contracts in the, in the memo. So if council has any questions about those, I've made some recommendations about primarily they're around reviewing the cost of the service that we've contracted for, what it's costing us to contract it. And then also bidding out services. I think there are some contracts that we have that we have not formally bid for some time or that we haven't formally bid at all. And that I think it's a good practice to do so so that we introduce competition, which generally results in better prices for these kinds of things. We've also included a complete list in the agenda item. So if council has any other questions about other contracts we have, you can see we contract out quite a bit of work. Sometimes it makes a lot of sense because we don't have the capacity or the skill set in-house to do the work. Other times, you know, we've noted some things